Chair Harris, we're ready.
Okay, welcome. I will call the October 23, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order. Will everyone please stand and will Commissioner Elmore please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Staff roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present with the exception of Vice Chair Celine and Commissioner Reed, who are excused this evening.
Thank you. Okay, public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? See none? Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next item. Staff, are there requests for continuances? Staff, are there requests for continuances?
No, Chair, there's no requests for continuances.
Okay, thank you. Item number one, the minutes of the October 9, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from the October 9, 2025 meeting? Mr. Mosher?
Chair Harris, members of the Planning Commission, my name as you know is Jim Mosher. And as you know, I quite often supply some suggested corrections to the minutes. And I just wanted to point out the reason I did not submit any for this meeting is I did not notice any corrections that needed to be made to the minutes, so congratulate the staff on that.
Congratulations, staff.
Pat yourself on the back, thank you.
On the other hand, I would note that when the public comes in here and picks up the agenda for the meeting, the cover page is a little different than the one that's posted online, and the staff might want to double-check the spelling of the first name of Secretary Langford. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. Call for a motion? I'll close the public hearing. Call for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Without any edits.
Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item number two, East Coast Highway Restaurant. This is PA 2024-0198. The site location is 3840 East Coast Highway. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners. My name is Jerry Aragiasis, planner. So it's items for the 3840 East Coast Highway Restaurant, conditional use permit. So the subject property is located within the Corona del Mar Commercial Corridor. Surrounding uses include the other commercial properties along East Coast highways, which include other restaurants, office uses and personal service uses. It's surrounded by the residential component of Corona del Mar. And then across East Coast Highway is Plant Community Number 36, which is a senior housing community. The subject property, it's built with a, building was built in 1970s. It's an approximately 2,100 square foot building, single-story. Features two tenant suites. The one on the right was previously occupied by a restaurant. And the one on the left was previously occupied by a professional office. And both of these suites have been vacant since 2023. And on the left is some stairs that lead up to the property's rooftop parking lot. Sort of a unique condition. It's the only one of its kind in Corona del Mar. It's accessed via an alley off of Hazel Drive. This is the existing floor plan. In orange is the entry area. It's an exterior entry area with the stairs that lead up to that rooftop parking lot. In purple is that 800 square foot office suite. And then below is the restaurant suite, which has about 675 square feet of public area. As part of the property owner's intentions to lease this building to a new operator, does propose to combine these two suites into a new restaurant space, which would include approximately 843 square feet of public area, which would be about 160 square foot increase from the existing restaurant space. Would have a larger backup house area of roughly 1,100 square feet. Then an entry area would also be revised due to accessibility upgrades. It would be an accessible lift. The stairs would be replaced with that lift, which leads up to that rooftop parking lot. This is the existing rooftop. It features eight parking spaces and the stairs. As part of accessibility upgrades and changes to the parking lot design standards, would be reduced to six parking spaces, one of which would be an accessible van ADA space. The property owner would also propose six bicycle spaces. And there on the upper left is that accessible lift. This is a rendering of the proposed facade. Features a contemporary design, which would be compatible with adjacent buildings. And that column with the wood accents is the accessible lift. These are some of the characteristics of the existing vacant restaurant and office suite in the proposed restaurant. So grossable area, the overall building envelope is not changing. The two suites are just going to be combined and reconfigured for the new restaurant. In terms of public area square footage, again, the existing is 647 for the Suite B restaurant, and 843 is proposed for the new restaurant. Parking lot spaces, eight existed and six are being proposed. Outdoor dining was previously not existent, and it's not being proposed as part of this restaurant. Hours of operation, so essentially the office and the restaurant previously had offset hours. So the restaurant would operate in the evening time and the office would operate in the morning time. However, the proposed restaurant proposes hours from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Live entertainment and dancing was previously prohibited in the restaurant, and that'll be continuing to be prohibited as part of this application. The previous restaurant operated with a beer and wine Type 41 ABC license, and the same is being requested for this restaurant. So typically, a restaurant of this type would require a minor use permit, which is approved by the city's zoning administrator. However, due to the reduction in onsite parking, as well as intensification of the use, as now the entire building is a restaurant, there is a parking waiver that's required. And so that would require approval of a conditional use permit. And so this is the existing and proposed parking demand. There in blue is the total required demand based on the vacant restaurant and the office suite. 16 spaces would be required, and there are eight spaces currently existing for the new restaurant. 22 spaces would be required as part of the adjustment to that rooftop parking lot. It would be six spaces provided, and there would be a 16-space waiver which would be requested. To substantiate the waiver, there was a parking study that was prepared and submitted, prepared by LSA, provides several factors to support how the property can accommodate this restaurant. And it notes that the restaurant's intended to be a café, which would serve a variety of breakfast foods, would have an earlier peak demand compared to the adjacent restaurants, which can be considered more fine dining restaurants would have, which have peak hours more in the evening time. The dense residential and commercial context of Corona del Mar results in a high volume of pedestrians and cyclists in the area. Compared to a typical suburban restaurant, this restaurant is expected to serve the neighborhood where it's a lot of walk-up patrons to the restaurant. And those six bicycle spaces would accommodate a lot of the cyclists in Corona del Mar. There's also several nearby bus stops along East Coast Highway that would provide additional alternative mode of transportation to the area and to the restaurant. The study also had parking management recommendations, of one of which was to require or recommend that restaurant employees park within the onsite parking lot. And so this was really to ensure that restaurant employees would not park on the street as they would, it would be more long-term parking. And that way, more short-term parking for customers would be allowed on the street. And more of the long-term parking would be captured onsite. And these recommendations were reviewed and accepted by the city traffic engineer. Staff does believe that all findings can be made for this application. The restaurant's in appropriate land use for the Commercial Corridor District in Corona del Mar. The improvements conform to all development standards of the CC District, including height and the floor-to-air ratio. No late hours are proposed, and no live entertainment or dancing is proposed. The parking study does conclude that the property can accommodate the café-style restaurant. And the police department did review the Type 41 beer and wine license. Did not have any objections and provided conditions of approval related to the sale of alcohol. Just to review some notable conditions of approval. Condition number 10 establishes the allowed hours of operation from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Condition number 11 authorizes staff the ability to require additional parking mitigation measures should any parking nuisances occur in the future. Condition 14 prohibits the alley from being used as an employee break area or smoke area. Condition 15 prohibits any outdoor dining located on that rooftop parking lot. And condition 14 and 15 really intended to allow for the operation of the restaurant to be compatible with the adjacent residential properties located just behind the restaurant. And then condition number 45, conditions the recommendation from the parking study to require restaurants to park onsite, and this allows the recommendation to be enforceable as since it's provided as a condition. Condition number 48, there was a typographical error. It didn't mention a closing hour of 8:00 PM. Initially, the property owner did request hours of operation until 8:00 PM. However, due to the, there's not a operator who's been identified at this time, 10:00 PM was requested to allow for flexibility in hours of operation. And so staff is just recommending to strike condition number 48 as condition number 10 already captures the hours of operation. And the police department did review the hours of operation of 10:00 PM, and they are supportive of the 10:00 PM closing hour. Condition number 49 is a condition from the police department just to prohibit the restaurant from operating as a bar or nightclub as defined by the municipal code. Staff did receive one comment letter. The comment letter does generally support the application as a restaurant, but it doesn't note some concerns regarding the parking waiver. But just as I previously mentioned, there was a parking study that was prepared, and staff has reviewed the recommendations regarding the parking mitigation, has determined those to be appropriate and can substantially support the requested parking waiver. And so with that, staff does recommend the Planning Commission to conduct the public hearing, find that the project is exempt from CEQA, and adopt the resolution approving the conditional use permit. We do have the project architect and the owner in attendance, and we're able to provide, answer any questions that you may have. And staff is also available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aragiasis. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Mr. Langford?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Aragiasis, great job. Thank you for your presentation. A couple quick questions. I noticed the existing rear setback is currently zero feet, and the proposed rear setback is five feet. What is changing in the rear?
So there's nothing being changed in the rear. So currently, the rear setback, it's, the rear is essentially just a driveway. So the actual building, it doesn't reach the rear of the property and actually have an additional slide. So this is the actual tenant space. And so in the rear, there's, it's just compacted earth because there's a slope in the area. And so the actual roof area, shown in brown, it would just be considered an at-grade driveway. And that trash enclosure, although it is in the setback, relocation of it would further impede the creation of parking spaces. So it is, would remain at that location. It would be considered non-conforming. So the setback would still remain the same. There are not any changes to the setback.
Okay, great. And my second question was about the parking management plan. I just wanted to ask if it was common that these parking-related conditions constitutes the parking management plan that were required to have issuing a CUP like this?
Yeah, so the parking management plan, it's actually incorporated into the parking study. The reason it's conditioned is because now that becomes an enforceable condition. And so it's really incorporated already into the parking study. And the condition is just, again, allows it to be enforced through coenforcement in the future.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioners, Mr. Rosen?
So I have a question in regard to the fact that there's no operator identified here, and there's several items here that sort of stack on top of each other that actually don't make a lot of sense to me, especially this, the concept of parking where it's supposed to overlay with existing uses. And then we're going to throw in a Type 41 beer license, stay open till 10:00. And I know that there's this concept of operational characteristics will be similar to whatever's in the traffic study. So how does that take place? So we've got all these things that sort of don't make sense, in my opinion. When will that determination be made if it's operationally compatible with the parking study?
One of the items of the parking studies does mention that would have an earlier peak hour, and that's because of its café style, you know, compared to more of a fine dining, you know, evening peak hour. So the project description does mention it's the intention of the property owner to lease to more of a breakfast-serving establishment. But the hours of operation are just extended to allow for more evening time, but it's really intended to be more of a café style. So it is possible that they would have more of a breakfast establishment, and they could close earlier. But the later hours are just allowed for flexibility if future operational needs would require that.
I look forward to hearing the applicant's presentation this evening.
Perhaps, perhaps the applicant can clarify similar concerns. I have a question. Are there other establishments in the area, restaurant establishments, that have similar parking exceptions that have been granted or are permitted at this time?
Yeah, there's a, nearby restaurants, I believe it's on the next block. It's the Momma D's Restaurant. That actually, the actual property has residential units as well. Does not provide any parking. I believe there's a waiver that was approved in 2017. And there was also conditions of approval related to parking management measures. And that one also did not have any, although did not have a formal off-site parking agreement. There was informal agreements with neighboring property owners. And so this, this property owner would also be encouraged to further work with adjacent property owners to see if that's something that can be sought out after in the nearby future.
But it wasn't required, you're saying? They weren't formal? That's what you clarified?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Okay. Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make a presentation or comment?
Hi. Thank you for being here. Thanks for doing your study. Appreciate it.
Will you please state your name for that?
My name is Buddy Mulway. I work for Theory R Properties. They own the building that we're discussing. So yeah, the, to answer your question in terms of the café style, the type of operator that we're pursuing, we are pursuing mostly breakfast, lunch operators. It is difficult to identify what their, what the, what the, what their hours of operation will be as we can't sign a lease with somebody until we kind of have, we can guarantee the space. So that's, that's sort of the, you know, carriage before the, the horse before the carriage conversation. But we are born and raised in the area, local. We want something that's family-friendly, that is a, an add to the vibrance of CDM, which makes it so charming and great. And it, and it will add to the, the character of CDM, and it's consistent with their needs. And it's sort of a little bit of a miss in terms of the offerings down there right now. So love the area. That's why we invested in it. But we have identified several operators, and they are very similar to a café-style breakfast operator. And they're, they're very good. They're, and they're excited to open and be in CDM. So that's the intent behind it, and hopefully we can get this approved and have, have a great restaurant that we're all, all supporting. So is there any specific questions?
Real quick, do you agree with the recommended conditions on the project?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, yeah, I would, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, now's the time. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Rosen, Claire Ford?
I mean, real quick, and I appreciate your, your comments in terms of the operational characteristics. It's still an unknown. And that does make it unusual, but conditions number six and 13 sort of define the space as having to be a café. So I just wanted to hear that that was indeed the only use that was going to make sense based on these overlaps with the traffic study and all of those things. So if that's the case, then I'm much more comfortable.
Appreciate it, yeah. Thank you.
Commissioners, any clarifications? Okay. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item?
Chair Harris, members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I share Commissioner Rosen's concern about the unusual nature of approving a conditional use permit without even the initial operator being identified. It is unusual and slightly concerning. The comments I had in the resolution on handwritten pages 24 and 25, these are the findings you need to make to show that the application is consistent with all of the provisions of the zoning code. And when I looked at the ones on page 25, it's showing me that it's inconsistent in terms of parking. And number six in particular points to a section of the code about non-conforming parking. And it identifies even the pre-changing of the floor plan. It was non-conforming, and it will become even more non-conforming, which seem, the facts seem to be indicating that it doesn't apply with the zoning code. So perhaps in fact six, after citing Section 2038.060, perhaps a sentence should be added that that section does allow an intensification of non-conforming uses to have a reduction in the parking requirement as provided elsewhere in the zoning code. And then later, the findings for a reduction in parking are made. But as it is, it just sounds like it's not consistent. My main comments, I think there's a couple of typographical and perhaps substantive problems with the conditions of approval on handwritten page 33. Condition of approval number 11 has to do with the property generating a greater parking demand that, I think the word is supposed to be greater demand, greater parking demand than anticipated and is creating a parking nuisance. In that case, additional parking mitigation measures may be required. That, I think, definitely is supposed to be the word "than", but I'm questioning whether the "and" should be "or", because even if it is at the anticipated demand, it may turn out that it's creating a nuisance. So I would think either if it's greater demand than anticipated or is creating a parking nuisance, and not just "or", not just "both". You may or may not agree with that. And I don't know, in reading condition of approval number 13, the commissioners, there's something grammatically wrong with this. The business operation "and" shall reflect the operational characteristics described in the parking study. It, either the "and" is not supposed to be there, or there was something that was supposed to go after the "and". And that might need some scrutiny because that's the condition that Commissioner Rosen is relying on to ensure that it's a café-type use. And so certainly something grammatically wrong with that. And then my only substantive comment is the staff is recommending all of the staff parking be on the roof, but that is the only ADA parking that's in the area. So I would ask you, should the ADA parking, is it more appropriate for that to be a staff parking place or to reserve that for guests who are handicapped? If it's the only handicap parking in the area, I would think it should probably be reserved for the guests of the restaurant rather than employees, but I'm not sure. I think that's something to ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Next speaker? See none? Okay. Does the applicant wish to respond? Anything? Okay. You don't, you don't have to if you feel like you suffice.
My name is Gary Dation. I'm one of the principal owners of Theory R. We bought the property. On the ADA parking, we're putting in a lift so that people could drop people off and park, you know, if they're not driving themselves, so that it gives access. Secondly, we're right next to, we go, I go by there all the time in the evening. They could pull up in front. There's, I'd say, without exaggeration, 80% of the time I go by there, there's empty spaces. So they could pull up and let a handicapped person off. So that was one of the conditions you put, and of course, one of the conditions we want to comply with. So I think the parking should be addressed pretty easily. I don't know that I could stop an ADA employee, but I could certainly ask the restaurant that comes in. We have had a couple prospects. One, you know, these procedures take a while. We lost, and they moved to another town. But most, everyone who's interested is a café, because that's what fits the venue of Corona del Mar the best. So I think that addresses it. Was there anything else? No? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Staff, have any comments for the record?
Yeah, I just wanted to, thank you, Mr. Mosher, for pointing out those grammatical, yet important items for the condition. So condition number 11, it's meant to say that in the opinion of the community director, police work staff, or city traffic engineer, if the property is generating a greater parking demand than anticipated, and it's creating a parking nuisance, then additional parking mitigation measures would be required. So it would be "then" instead of "that". And then for condition number 13, it would just be striking the word "and".
I just want to add regarding the comment for, condition 45 requiring the customer, sorry, the employees to park on the rooftop. We can modify that condition to require that employees park within the five standard parking stalls, and then that way the ADA space is available for either customers or employees that may be disabled.
One, none now? They're putting one in? Can I, I want to get a clarification on 13. If it's representing that it's, it's most likely going to be a café. It sounds like they're looking at that, and it represents a café for the time of use in a way, or the high peak demand. If they don't do a café, let's say it does a wine bar or restaurant at evening hours, are they then in conflict with 13 by the parking study going forward? Is that a problem, or is that something we should at least get ahead of now? I know this is kind of going on, piggybacking Commissioner Rosen's question, I think, before.
Yeah, that's a good question. So a lot of the use permits we approve, they run with the law. So, a lot of the use permits we approve, they run with the land, right? So it's a vested land use. Restaurants come and go, and so generally staff looks at it to see if it's in substantial conformance with the original approval, and we would do something similar here. So we're kind of anticipating a cafe use with a higher peak demand during breakfast and lunch, I think, in the area, and maybe Kevin can chime in, or correct me if I'm wrong, but peak parking demand in this area typically occurs around lunchtime, when there's a lot of overlap between the offices, the restaurants, it's a lot more activity. In the evening, there seems to be a lot more supply of parking in the area, and so that's why we're comfortable providing more flexibility with the closing hours, because that way we could provide some guardrails as far as what we would deem to be acceptable. But if there's concerns with that, you know, the commission could curtail some of the late hours if that's a concern. But generally, I think what we would deem in substantial conformance with this approval would be a cafe, or kind of more of a fast casual type dining, or even fine dining, if it's, you know, pretty small. A wine bar within a, a small restaurant would probably be acceptable, it's still within the, the parameters of our conditions. But I think if it turned out to be a fast food restaurant, then we would want to reevaluate the use.
Sure. Okay, thank you. On condition 45, should I close the public hearing before we do these commission, these questions to staff?
Yes, if you guys are going to engage in deliberations.
Sure, okay. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, thank you. Commissioner Gazan?
Thank you. On condition 45, just because of, I don't know if you can really tell an employee that they, if, and if they are handicapped, that they can't park in a, in a stall. So can we just, where there's some language that says, as long as it's applicable, or we're consistent with the American with Disabilities Act, just to kind of cover ourselves?
Yeah, we, we can modify the language, we'll work with it.
Other questions, commissioners? Clarification? Motion, thoughts? Chair LaFord?
Thank you, Chair. I know we've been, I lived down in the CDM for a long time, I know a lot of you probably have, have too, and CDM's been begging for something like this, and so I'm excited to see something come. I know the Corona Del Mar Commercial Corridor Study is coming to city council in a couple of weeks, and I imagine their findings are going to be something similar to how do we attract businesses like these restaurants? So I'm excited to see one come up in a place that people can attend. I don't have a problem with the early or the late hours, I think that's, I'm personally happy with that. So, yeah, I'm, I'd like to make a motion, if no one else wants to say anything, for approval as presented, with the changes to, does anybody have the condition numbers? 11, 13, and 45, as discussed.
Did we catch everything? Yes? Any other thoughts from commissioners?
I agree in all seconds, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations. Next item, number three, MacArthur Court, PA 2025-0090. Site location, 4665, 46575, 4680, 4685, and 4695 MacArthur Court, and 4470 Campus Drive, and APN 445-121-17. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
No, yes, Chair. So Jenny Tran, associate planner is going to, I'm sorry, it's not Jenny Tran anymore, it's Jenny Hansen, recently married and changed.
Congratulations.
Sorry. She'll present, but real quick, I just want to kind of reemphasize that the approval before you today is not the approval of the actual mixed-use housing project, it's really just the development agreement and affordable housing plan that would allow the applicant to allocate 700 units of the overall development limit for that housing opportunity area to their project site. The future project will come back to the planning commission under a separate entitlement review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harris, and commissioners. My name is Jenny Hansen, and I'm the planner for the MacArthur Court project for the development agreement and affordable housing implementation plan. So outlined in blue here is the project location that makes up MacArthur Court campus. It's actually made of five different parcels in, highlighted in the different colors here. Primarily, it is 4665, 4685, 4695, 4675, 4680 MacArthur Court, and 4770 Campus Drive. Additionally, a portion of the MacArthur Court campus is within the HO1 housing overlay, as shown in green here. And as, as mentioned, the applicant is seeking to vest the development rights for a future mixed-use campus. This would involve demolishing three office buildings on 4665 and 4685 MacArthur Court, and 4770 Campus Drive. The project would also construct two new residential buildings for 700 residential units, construct 10,000 square feet for new non-residential building, maintain two existing high-rise offices, and to maintain existing parking garage. For this project, the request is for the development agreement to vest development rights for 10 years with public benefits to the city, and for the affordable housing implementation plan for the affordable housing units at a rate of 7% of the residential units, which is 49, 49 units. So as mentioned, the mixed-use campus is a future project, and not, and the development of it is not part of this review, as no plans have been submitted at this time. The future development of the mixed-use campus will require additional entitlements, including a site development review, traffic review, and subdivision map, and a SEQA will be evaluated again at the time. So again, this is just for the development agreement and the affordable housing implementation plan. This shows the conceptual site plan with the larger parcel along MacArthur Boulevard showing Building 1 and Building 2, where the two residential buildings are proposed. This is just a conceptual site plan for the larger MacArthur Court campus, and the design is subject to change once that future project is submitted. So for the development agreement, there is no requirement for a development agreement since there is no legislative action being taken. However, this is a voluntary DA to vest the rights to develop the project for a term of 10 years. There is a public benefit fee for $17,000 per unit, for units built on or after July 1st, 2028. It also includes a MacArthur Boulevard revitalization fee for $3.25 million for improvements to MacArthur Boulevard. There's also a dedication of open space, this, this would be a public one-acre easement for open space dedicated to the city. The applicant will be paying development impact fees related to fire, police, recreation, and sewer, and it also does include that affordable housing implementation plan. And as a note, the development agreement that was published as an exhibit in the resolution is still under review, and a final version will be prepared for city council with some minor changes. The affordable housing implementation plan, again, is also a voluntary AHIP, and it's a voluntary AHIP for 7% of 700 units, so approximately 49 units for affordable housing. So the 700 market rate residential units will be constructed on the MacArthur Court campus, and then the affordable housing units will be constructed off-site. The first building permit for the affordable housing is to be issued by January 31st, 2029. If the units are not constructed, then suitable land will be dedicated to the city for the development of the affordable housing, or a fee of $36,690 per market rate unit will be paid to the city. For the SEQA component of the project, a program environmental impact report, or PEIR, certified by city council on July 23rd, 2024, was done, which evaluated impacts from new housing overlays on the environment. And the applicant's consultant prepared a 15183 consistency analysis that found no new impacts. This was peer-reviewed by the city's consultant, who prepared the EIR, which was Kimble Horn, and a water supply assessment is required and was reviewed and approved by the Irvine Ranch Water District. Staff would like to make one red line to the conditions of approval, and is to remove condition of approval number five. This is our standard condition that we have, which is related to expiration dates for approvals. Typically, it's 24 months, or in this case, it's for the time provided in the development agreement. However, this is not a relevant condition, since the development agreement sets a time limit for a term of 10 years, and putting in this condition isn't relevant to the project as the term is already set in the development agreement. So this would be completely removed from the resolution. Staff is recommending to conduct a public hearing, find the project consistent with SEQA section 15183, and to recommend approval to the city council, where the next hearings will be the city council public hearing on November 18th, and the city council's second reading on December 9th. Thank you, commissioners. I'm available for any questions. The applicant is also available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Chair LaFord?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Hansen, thank you. The, there's 700 market rate onsite, and the affordable will be offsite. How are we managing that with the developmental cap for the HO1 airport area development cap? Are we including the 49, is it 749? Is it 700? Or does it depend on where the affordable units get built in the future?
Yes, Commissioner LaFord. So for this, the 700 comes out of the development limit cap for the airport area, and would be allocated for development of units on this site. The affordable housing units that would be provided, we don't have a location identified just yet, but that would be separate outside of these 700 units.
Okay. And that, that project would come at a separate, would come to our body or city council, and then it would get allotted to whatever area it might end up in at that point?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Okay, and then, Ms. Hansen, I just wanted to confirm that the MacArthur Court project would be subject to the same developmental standards as the other HO1 housing opportunity sites, and that those aren't different somehow due, in the development agreement? I didn't see that they were different. Is that, are they going to be held to the same standard?
Correct. So they will be per the HO1 development standards, there's no deviations from those standards requested as part of the DA.
Great, thanks.
Commissioners?
Is it 7%? Is that agreed to? Is it 7%? It said "up to," so on both, but I, I was understanding, or I was thinking perhaps that's if they don't build 700 units, it's 7% of whatever percentage that is, is that correct?
Correct, so it's 7.
Whatever that number is.
At minimum, it's 7% of the number of units they build, so if they don't build all 700, it's just 7% of what they do end up building.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, any ex parte communication? I spoke with the consultant of the applicant.
I was contacted by the consultant, but we did not speak.
I spoke with the applicant's consultant.
Same, I spoke with the applicant's consultant.
I spoke with the applicant's consultant.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does the applicant want to make a presentation or comment?
Good evening, Chair Harris, members of the commission. I am Shawna Schaffner, Chief Executive Officer of CAA Planning, representing Irvine Company in this application for a development agreement and an affordable housing implementation plan. I think Ms. Hansen has provided a very thorough staff report tonight, so I don't have a distinct presentation for you. I would like to highlight that we did receive a letter from the Western Carpenters late last night, or late yesterday afternoon. We have responded in writing to that letter. We don't believe that any additional issues have been raised, which warrant any further discussion or analysis. I would also like to note that we are in agreement with staff striking condition of approval five. We agree it's not relevant here. I'd like to thank Ms. Hansen for her work on this project, getting us here tonight. I'm glad she could be here still, and I'm available for any questions that the commission has. And if I didn't say it, we're in full support of the staff recommendation.
Thank you. No question, any questions for the applicant? Okay, does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item?
Chair Harris, and members of the commission, my name again is Jim Mosher. I have not read or understand in detail yet the development agreement, that apparently a revised version of that will be going to the city council. But it does strike me, just like your previous item was a little unusual, you were approving a conditional use permit without quite knowing who the operator would be. I thought development agreements usually were locking in a particular project, and that this, and freezing the zoning and so forth as at the time of the development agreement aside, this, this one seems to be locking in the zoning without, I, I'm not quite clear how the project being described of the 700 apartments and so forth is tied into or required by the development agreement, or it's just allowing whatever the current zoning will allow. I have concerns about this. Number one, that the, on handwritten page 18, the SEQA findings in the second paragraph state that all of the properties involved are within the HO1 subarea, but if you look at figure two in the staff report, only a portion of this is actually within the HO1 area, although the development agreement and the other documents are saying they're all in there. And in a sense, they maybe all are in there, because I don't know if it was announced to you or not, the, there was a director's determination on June 6th called Planning Activity 2025-0117, probably not known to too many people that are at the Irvine Company, but the director added the rest of that to HO1, even though in the general plan, land use element, policy 4.4, says sites can be added, but they can be added through rezoning. And I don't think the director has the authority to add that, but the time to appeal that expired before the public probably knew it happened. So the Irvine Company seems to be locking in the HO1 zoning for the entire area, based probably on that, probably erroneous director's determination that happened in the past. And, and then in addition to that, on October 10th, the California Court of Appeals published a binding decision called New Commune DTLA versus the City of Redondo Beach, in which they found that the, although the HCD had recommended to cities that overlays was a good way of meeting our arena requirements, the court has found that they are invalid, which means that the whole housing overlay thing is going to have to be probably rethought if that opinion is not overturned by the California Supreme Court. And so the Irvine Company is locking in something that is questionable, and how it's, so my time here is up, but I will have more comments about that, I guess, to the city council when it gets to them, but I'm a little uncomfortable for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, chairs and council members. My name is Leonard de la Rosa, I'm a Western States Regional Council of Carpenter representative here in Orange County. As this development moves forward, I urge the city to require that this building, this construction be built with contractors that hire locally, pay a prevailing wage, and utilize apprentices from a state-certified apprenticeship program. These workforce requirements not only ensure a fair wage and quality construction, but also reduce construction-related admissions, shortens commute distances, and supports local workforce developments. A 2022 Report of California Workforce Development Board titled Putting California on the High Road concluded that investing in growing, diversifying, and upscaling workforce can enhance the effectiveness of climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District also found that local hire policies directly contribute to the reduction of air pollution. The Affordable Housing and High Roads Job Act of 2022, known as AB 2011, reaffirms the state's commitment to connecting workforce standards, housing affordability, and environmental responsibilities by requiring prevailing wage on apprenticeship utilization on qualifying projects. By incorporating these standards into the MacArthur Court campus development agreement, the City of Newport Beach can ensure that this the City of Newport Beach can ensure that this project supports good local jobs, reduces environmental impact, and provides meaningful community benefits that align with the city's long-term goals. Thank you guys for your time and I hope you guys have utilized this consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay. Does the applicant wish to respond to anything or?
Good evening again, Shawna Schaffner on behalf of Irvine Company. I would like to address Mr. Moser's comments related to the housing overlay and the apparent discrepancy between the map and the parcels. I'd like to note that the housing overlay went across parcel lines. And so when we filed this application, we looked at the entirety of the parcels and our application matches that. So the housing overlay, because it didn't include the entirety of all of the parcels, I think that's something that staff have addressed and that's why there was an apparent discrepancy. We don't view that as a problem in this application.
Thank you. Staff have any comments for the records?
No, just to reaffirm what Ms. Schaffner mentioned. So the director did approve a director's determination that helped clarify a discrepancy in the boundaries of the housing overlay parcel. In that director's determination, there's detailed explanation explaining why it's appropriate to include the entire parcel as well as well under the overlay.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Bring this to the commission for discussion and action. Any comments, commissioners? Thoughts on the item?
Thoughts? I guess I'll start. I think staff did a good job working with the company on this one and actually had some pretty good incentives to get some units built and then also with the affordability plan, I think it was pretty fair and actually a real, hopefully, well, hopefully realistic, but if not, it actually gives a pretty good dollar amount or unit count on a future project. So supportive, go forward. And any other thoughts, commissioners? I'd make a motion to approve.
The motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, item number four, motions for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? None. Item number five, report by the community development director or requests for matters which a planning commission member would like placed on a future agenda. Director?
Yes. Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. Jaime Morillo. Just want to note that for November 6th, we will be canceling that hearing. We don't have any items for that. And so our next meeting will be on November, sorry, November 20th. And so we'll have a medical office condo map for your consideration. And then also just want to note that at the last planning commission meeting, I did present on the safety element and land use element and we were soliciting comments from the commission. And so we'll have a discussion item on the 20th as well. So if you have any additional comments for staff to consider as we move forward with the elements, we'll take your comments in.
Thank you. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on these items? Mr. Moser? Okay. Item number six, request for excused absences. Anything, anyone, commissioners? None? Okay. Have a great Halloween. Thank you, everyone. Good journey.